I would like to welcome everyone to the October 9th, 2012 School Board Business Meeting. Could we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let's say allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, united in God, in the Father, in the Son, and in the Holy Spirit.
Okay, are there any adjustments to the agenda tonight? No? All right, seeing none, we will move on to approval of the school board minutes. I think we can do these as a slate. First, we have the executive session Tuesday, September 11th, and the regular business meeting that followed that. Do I have a motion, please?
I would move that we approve the minutes as presented in our packet of the executive session Tuesday, September 11th, and the regular business meeting also Tuesday, September 11th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, changes, comments? Okay. All those in favor? Seven oh. All right, we will move on now to comments by student representatives. I don't think there are any middle school representatives, are they? No, they're, those are high school students. They're here for the... You're big for middle schoolers.
They look like middle schoolers, don't they?
I know, I thought they were coming. I had been given a couple of names, but I don't see them in attendance.
Okay. So let's go to our real high school reps. You're about with Neon High School.
Hello. So what is happening in the high school right now? Currently this week, we have spirit week going on, which is a lot of fun. The theme today was pink for breast cancer awareness. Tomorrow is neon, then Thursday's twin day, and Friday's class colors. And it's fun, and the seniors are gonna win hallway decorating again this year.
Says the senior.
We've been having some candidates for local as well as state and national offices coming in and talking to mostly the senior class. We've also had a, this associated with the AP government class, and Ted Jordan's actually been organizing a lot of it as he normally does. I know Matt was actually involved with helping Angus King, actually came and talked to us. We've had Mr. Dill come and talk to the entire senior class, as well as the candidates nights that have been held here with, we've had some people who are running for local office come and talk to us, so it's been a nice learning experience. Yeah, I'll pass it over to Abby.
We had Cape Fusion two weeks ago.
Yeah.
And that was a big success. It was a lot of fun, and we wanna thank everyone who put that together, especially Mr. Filio. And we had-
Abby, can you tell what Cape Fusion was for people who don't know?
Okay, sure. Cape Fusion was just night of a bunch of things, actually, that was held at the high school, and it included laser tag, which we had a huge, like, blow up laser. It was really fun. Laser tag thing is hard to explain. But we also had four square and dodgeball, as well as a bunch of food, which was delicious. And then the most talked about, for sure, activity was the obstacle course in the pool, the one that's up during every open swim, I'm told. But that was a lot of fun. It was a great turnout, and it was awesome.
And the purpose of the event was to provide a safe place for teenagers to get together and have fun?
Yeah, to keep people out of trouble on Saturday night.
Yeah. I mean, that's not really what it was advertised as a student body to.
Yeah, it wasn't advertised as that.
But I guess, sure. Also, the jazz combos have started rehearsing.
And PSATs for sophomores and juniors are coming up. So that's, I mean, pretty important for them. I know a couple of people are being, getting a little nervous about that.
Parent-teacher conferences are October 26th and 27th.
And the science team had a meet today. That's pretty much, pretty much everything there is. Actually, I had one more thing. The student council, I thought I should mention something about the student council. We're actually working to, just a little update, is we're working to find, still working to find dance alternatives, things like that, kind of fun things. I think Cape Fusion was a great example of that, fun things that the school can do, like social events. Also, we're trying to pass as many of our fundraiser ideas as possible to the current junior class, because they're kind of lacking in funds right now, and they're actually gonna have to pay for our prom, the senior prom, and they actually have less money than the current sophomore class does. Not through lack of trying, but they do, and so we're trying to kind of pass some of our fundraising ideas on to them. So, yeah.
Great, great. Thank you, guys. And our middle school rep is here, Connor Thorack. Thank you so much for joining us.
Hi, my name is Connor Thorack, and I'm a rep for the middle school student council. We have a couple of sports going on right now, boys and girls, soccer, and field hockey and cross-country, and they're going pretty well. But I think the season's almost over, which is, kinda stinks, but there are conferences, the 25th and the 26th, and there's no school Friday, and there's a dance Thursday night, and it's pink for breast cancer awareness, and I think we're donating $1 towards breast cancer research. There's also the book fair, we have a book fair on the 23rd by the MSPA, and then we just finished kneecap testing, which went well.
Thanks, Connor.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to comments from the public on agenda items. Any comments from the public on agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to number five, communications. A, the 2013 National Merit semifinalists. Jeff, do you wanna?
Actually, guys, why don't you come on up here, too? Okay.
I really am sorry.
So Nolan mentioned that PSATs are next week, and it's the PSATs that the juniors will be taking next week, and the PSATs the juniors always take in the fall of that year that determines students who are recognized across the nation as National Merit semifinalists. Statistically, across the nation, 1% of all students in America are recognized as National Merit semifinalists, so these are the, these are the students who score in the very top 1%. So if you do the mathematics, we have 11 National Merit semifinalists, which is an absolute, which is the highest number we've ever had. And if you, if you sort of carry that out, it's like the equivalent of what an average school would get in a, if you had a class of about 1,100 kids in the 12th grade, and we have a class of about 135, I think. So it's a tremendous tribute to these guys and to the others, and I've just asked them to just sort of say, just come up to the microphone and just say who they are, and then I'm gonna name the other folks who aren't able to be here.
I'm Matt Gilman.
I'm Sam Sherman.
And I'm Daniel Epstein.
And in addition to these three, there are eight others who are unable to make it here tonight because of science team, soccer, and a number of activities, and a couple who have jobs, and those are Emma Inhorn, Francesca Governale, Ally Briggs, Travis Delino, Brett Parker, Ben Hansel, Robert Fruchero, and Cam Caswell. So we just wanted to bring them here tonight, and just to briefly recognize them for what is outstanding, outstanding accomplishment over their education all the way up through 11th grade. So congratulations, guys.
Yes, congratulations.
Mary?
Yes.
Before they sit down, oh, they can sit down, but I had a couple of comments to make.
Okay, go ahead. Oh, wait just one second, guys.
Hey, guys, you're gonna get a compliment, you might wanna stay with it.
Yeah. From David Hillman, you'll want that.
Yeah, I know. Come on, come on, Sam, you know, if you're gonna get a compliment, it's worth it.
Take your coats off.
Now, if I'm giving compliments, you think they would care how long I went on? You might. I become, I was aware of this fairly early on, because my sons have seen you with these gentlemen and with these ladies, and Jeff did put it in perspective how great an accomplishment this is, but I ran a few numbers, and I'm sure they can correct me when my numbers are wrong, but don't do it. I wanna emphasize some things that's just amazing. To get this, you have to have a score greater than the top 1% in this entire country. We have 11 students out of about 136, I believe it is, which is, my information tells me is 40% more National Merit scholarships, semifinalists, in this year than in the best previous year we've ever had in our school system. That's a pretty amazing statistic for this class. Also, if you, if you look at the top 10% of our class, which is about 14 students, that means about 80% of the top 10% of our class are National Merit semifinalists. That is unbelievable. My poor son has to compete with these people, but he does very well, so. I have to tell you that I haven't, didn't, not do a search, but Jeff's point, I wanna expand on. To have a school of our size have, have this number, and its top 80% become a National Merit semifinalist, and to have this kind of a score, there is no school nationally, I don't care if it was Beverly Hills, Winchester, Mass., Lexington, I think this would compare or beat the best of the ones nationally, and I'm really proud of you guys and all the gals who made this. This is an unbelievable achievement, and I personally, and I'm sure the entire school board, are extremely proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other comments, or? Okay, great. You can be excused now. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you for joining us. Okay, so let's move on to communication, or to communications item B, which is our facilities study update.
Meredith? So I'll start, and Greg is here if you have some additional questions. We have seen a draft report, we don't yet have a final report in hand, we're expecting to have that sometime within the next week or so, as I understand it, but as we, and the town council looked or heard the same information in a workshop a couple of weeks ago, but as we've looked at the report, basically the summary is, on the low end, there's somewhere around $7 million worth of capital needs ahead of us in the next 10 years, and on the high end, somewhere around $10 million. So, again, over the next 10 years, capital needs for the school districts, including community services in the pool, are somewhere in the $7 to $10 million range. Right now, we're spending about, well, this year's budget is $207,000 in our capital plan, so clearly that means we're gonna need to step things up a bit in order to keep up with some of our capital and maintenance needs in the next decade. Again, the council has heard the same information, and I think what we'll be looking to do is to pull together a committee, a joint committee of both school and town folks to look at those needs and to plan out how to budget for them. But we, there's definitely a gap to fill. I don't think they're particularly surprising in that a lot of it is sort of roofing systems. As you look at just the square footage of our buildings alone, it's no surprise that roofs are gonna come due. Certainly, you know, there are some facilities needs at Pond Cove and the Middle School, as you look at the 30th building, for example. So, no great surprises, I would say, to us, but definitely, it's a significant amount of money, and, again, while this is no surprise to this board, clearly we're underspending in our capital needs, and we need to plan out how to compensate for that in the next decade.
Comments?
Sure. Just, the study confirmed a lot of the analysis Greg and the school board reviewed around, about a year and a half ago, when Ken Murphy was here, and for those board members that weren't on the board, we had a budget workshop, and the budget workshop, part of it focused on capital improvements, and the board had requested a five-year analysis, and obviously these are done in large ranges, and I think the analysis, number we had looked at was around $3.5 to $4 million over five years, and if you double that, that gets you to the $7 million number. So the study confirmed what we knew is that, you know, as buildings age, your capital maintenance and capital project spending increases, the $10 million is above that, above that range, and if you look at the gap, if you annualize it, you know, $7 to $10 million is $700,000 to $1 million, and we're at $200,000, and at that time, the board said, well, you know, if we look at the ability, you know, to fund our programs and to recognize challenging economic environment, what was kind of a prudent roadmap to fund the gap? And as many of you know, the capital, capital spending can show up in our budget in two ways. One is a line item called capital projects. Another line item would be debt service. In other words, if you issue a bond to fund capital projects, it won't show up in the budget as capital projects, it would show up as a principal payment on the underlying bond. So if you looked at the $200,000, we currently have a bond that we're paying, it's around $600,000 a year for Pond Cove and the Middle School. So if you look at the number, even though we have $207,000 in the budget, that's just for capital improvements, we have around another $700,000 to service a bond for historical. So the thought was, well, that bond's retiring in 2015, so as we pay down that bond, the board discussed reinvesting, or basically shifting from paying for historical capital improvements to maintaining the current assets of the school, which balances, you know, needs of future students with current students and paying for historical budgeting. So the strategy was, and my suggestion will remain, is when that bond retires, to shift that spending from historical capital improvements, which show up as a bond payment, into current year capital projects. And the reason I mention the bond is that, you know, there's different ways to fund capital projects. I'm not saying, you know, the bond wouldn't be a route the school to consider, but just to just look at the capital improvements line item is just one component of how much the district is spending on, on buildings. And, you know, I think the draft report highlights or confirms what we knew and what Greg's team had articulated. At that time, we chose to defer some of the spending to be, you know, prudent economically and to minimize, to the extent possible, the tax impact. And as you may know, there's some other capital projects that the town is considering. Obviously, the most relevant one is the library. There's also roadwork that needs to be done. So my view is, as one town, we can look at all these projects, prioritize them as much as possible, although I firmly believe, even if we have a joint committee that may wanna prioritize them, we're elected officials to look at the needs of the school. So I support a committee structure, but ultimately, it's our responsibility to provide the funds and the capital plan that maintains our assets. So there, I'm not sure what the next step is on the forming a committee, but I attended two meetings and am working with Frank Governale, who's the finance chair of the town, to identify the scope of the committee and make sure it's in a workable faction, so the town and, who are elected to represent the town and the school board, have the ability to make decisions that are prudent for those different buildings.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. That was a good overview. I know we've received a lot of questions with regard to that retiring debt, and I think you made a good, you gave a good overview of how the CIP was planned to, to sort of turn over into capital needs. So thank you. Any other comments? John?
I would just also thank you for that summary, and wanted to share that I, that I, I agree with you, particularly in terms of the scope of the responsibilities of the school board, in terms of managing the district's facilities needs, and that, you know, any, and it's, I appreciate the town's interest in working directly with the board on all the town's facilities needs, and I think that make, you know, that makes good sense. And the town has been, historically, has been very good to the school district in terms of our facilities needs, most recently in terms of the high school boiler. We have a bond that's retiring very soon around the high school boiler, only because of the town's generous contribution to that capital project. But I think it's, I would just support exactly the way you characterized the school board's responsibility in terms of school facilities needs, and so I appreciate that, and I just wanted to offer my support to that thinking.
David?
I just had a couple summary points I'd like to make. Michael knows a lot more about this than I do, and I think he gave a great overview, but I think simply, and I just wanna make sure I understand it and make sure that the public understands it. The bottom line is that although we're retiring a school bond within a certain number of years, that doesn't negate the need to spend money to do what the bond used to do. When you have aging buildings, you may pay off the bond, but because they're aging buildings, all of a sudden you have capital improvements, capital repairs, capital maintenance, and so forth. And I think people have to understand, because there is some information out there, that somehow if we retire these bonds, the schools can, this money can somehow magically be shifted somewhere else. The reality is, we have as much, if not a greater need, for revenue and monies to for maintenance and repair of our facilities. And therefore, I'm trying to, in a nutshell, say that, as a matter of fact, we're, our plan is to work with everybody and to try and utilize the one-town concept, but on the other hand, we have responsibility to some of the major assets of this town, which are our school system and its buildings, and we have been, in the past, for a variety of economic reasons, we've had to forego with, and do the more critical items, but we now have a great need for additional monies, whether it comes in the form of savings on, once we pay down the bond, or other monies in addition to there to, to pay for our capital funds. So the bottom line, I think I hear from all this, and which I would agree with, there is no free lunch, that when we retire the bonds, if, we still need as much, if not more money than what we're using to currently pay the bonds. Is that a fair statement? Simplistically enough, in my little mind, and the greater minds out there?
Yes, that is a fair statement.
Thank you.
Anyone else have comments or questions or concerns?
I guess I would have to say, and I wanna ask you, Michael, I think I'm right in believing, this is our job, is to take care of the school buildings and the property, and that the town is asking us to do this work, do the work, and of looking to see what needs to be done, and then fighting for the fact that we need to put funds into our school so that the school is, it's an asset to the town. And so this is our, this is our, one of our jobs that we have to do. So it's not, we wanna work with the town, but I also wanna make sure I go into this process knowing that this is my obligation, is to fight for the schools so that the buildings are taken care of for the future, for the future.
Right, right.
I'll just add, I mean, you know, the town did fund this study, and I appreciate all of Greg's time and effort on this behalf, but I think clearly with the intent that, absolutely, these are resources and assets that belong to the town as a whole, and obviously the job of the school board as elected officials is to look out for the schools and to protect school assets and to maintain them for future use. So, you know, clearly that is your sincere obligation, and I, and I do believe that the town wants to work collaboratively with us on this process, and I think that makes sense, you know, as you look ahead fiscally, five to 10 years, we wanna be in sync as we coordinate budgetary needs and try to line up dollars and revenues and attack major projects like roads and buildings. So one thought that I had, and I shared this with Mary, would be that perhaps we utilize the October workshop meeting to review the draft report, well, it won't be a draft, it should be a final report at that point, but to review the facilities study so that you have an opportunity to ask questions and understand the information that's contained within that report, sort of ahead of the work of a committee, so that the board, so that the committee representatives understand the concerns of the board as a whole.
And Greg, will you, will you provide us with a summary of what you feel are the priorities and?
We can take anything.
Okay. And do you have a sense at this point about, you know, sort of five years out, what we're looking at in terms of capital improvements that are necessary, and do you wanna come to the podium? And we'll talk more in our October meeting, I just wanted to-
Thank you, that was my question.
Oh, good, good.
I think Meredith categorized it correctly, is that we do have a $7 to $10 million need, and as we look at the retiring debt and what we need to cover, those things start to build up. And to give you an example, like the boiler plants at the middle school, they're currently 18 years old, they're coming to the end of their useful life expectancy, so in five years, we should be looking at replacing those. Those will be detailed in there in what priority they have. So like a boiler plant, there might be a priority three, which means in the next five to seven years, we really should be replacing that. And we should be able to manage our funds enough so that we are carrying that in our CIP budget. So when that five, seven-year point hits, it's in our CIP, and we get our boiler replaced, our boilers.
I just have one more clarifying question, and pardon me if it seems elemental, but so the current bond that we are paying upwards of $600,000 to $700,000, those are for capital improvements to the school system that have already been done, and we're just simply paying off the interest and principal on those?
Yeah, there's different, there's a group of bonds that I actually call capital projects bonds, and then there's, the bond I was referencing is from 1994, it was for the Pond Cove and the Middle School. So they're for, you know, physical, hard assets, you know, that, you know, like David said, if you build a building, when the bond's paid off, you know, the, the next step is to maintain the building. So, you know, I was just referencing, so when, you know, I was, frankly, I was asked, you know, by several voters, you know, why is our capital budget, how can it be only $200,000? And I explained to them the reasoning and the rationale, in one hope of the town, as one town working together, is to lay out a seven to 10-year plan and dedicate, ask funding to, to meet that plan, because it's one area where, you know, you can always defer, well, let's do the roof next year, but as the town and the schools both have been deferring capital projects, so rather than get to a point where, you know, this one would have this impact on taxes where this one wouldn't, is to say, well, wait a second, what are the overall needs for the town, including, you know, it doesn't matter if it's a school, the library, the town, what are the overall needs, and what's a reasonable amount we need to be allocating to those needs? And then the town and the library and the school would say, okay, how, what, which one should be prioritized? So it's to, to use my McGovern's term, to, you know, put them in a log box, sort of to say, you know, we have to make these investments, we can't keep deferring them, and that's, you know, what we've known, and we have a plan, so fortunately, we're on a path, but just to make sure people know that, you know, the capital improvements, we're spending more than $207,000 a year, it's just the largest chunk of it was an investment that was made in 1994 that we're, we're paying off today.
Yeah, John?
I have a question for you, Greg.
Sure.
When we replaced the boiler in the high school, that was actually a cash flow positive project, because- project, because the boiler, those boilers were 42 years old when they were replaced, and they were so inefficient relative to the system that was put in place, that the energy savings, if my recollection is correct, the energy savings was greater than the cost of the, the maintenance of the debt. So, it was essentially cash flow positive. So, do, as we, as the engineers looked at the facilities, did they take that kind, did they look at opportunities for that kind of project, as well as projects that, such as roofs and so forth, that may, you know, just have to be done? Did they look at where we might produce budget-positive results by making investments in efficiency? And I know you, you've done a ton of work on this kind of issue in the Alternative Energy Committee, and probably lots of other places.
Well, when you look at things like what can have a payback, just a few years ago, we did all the lighting. Now, they brought into this that we could update the lighting even more and get a payback. The problem is, we're at that point with some of our things, that the payback is very difficult. The boilers, for instance, at the middle school would have a payback, but not as great as the payback was at the high school. We, you know, we were projecting about $39,000 to $40,000 fuel cost savings, and we didn't meet that goal, actually exceeded it because of the warm weather. But that, replacing the boilers at the middle school will have a savings of energy consumption, but those are much newer boilers than, they're 18 years old, not 42 years old. So, the amount of energy savings is going to be there, but not enough to make it a positive cash flow, or a positive result from that at this time. If we could get something like natural gas into the community, that would also help us to have a much better payback on things like new boilers at the, at the middle school, at Pond Cove in the middle school, it's one plant. So, those are things that we hope in the future might happen, but we do need to look at those replacements because of life expectancy. Roofs, unfortunately, they just age out. We have roofs from 1988 on our buildings right now, and the average life expectancy is between 15 and 20 years. So, we're on the 25, 24 to 25-year mark at this point. So, we're on borrowed time in some of those areas, and we do identify those as a much higher priority need.
So, I'm hearing you say that the opportunities may be dwindling for the same kind of payback that we've seen in, in lighting. I think you guys saved, your team saved $3,000 a month in, in electrical bills by changing light bulbs in all the school bills. It was amazing to see that number drop as a result of that effort. And so, you're saying that there's fewer opportunities for that kind of payback, but did they, did the, did the engineers who did the study, did they look at where those opportunities still are, even if there may be fewer?
In, in those pieces of the study, were more of an overview of looking at, we have a heating plant, we know that the efficiencies of replacing that heating plant will have a payback, but we didn't get into saying, okay, if you update all of the lighting in the buildings again, you will be able to pay back this. And primarily because we have hit some of that areas already, and what we're looking at, things like a boiler plant at Pond Cove in the middle school, does have a payback, but it doesn't have that, you know, real quick payback, because we aren't looking at the same type of thing that we had at the high school. They overviewed it, but not to the level of, do this, and this is our payback.
Okay, thank you.
And I think in part, that wasn't the specific request made of that, of that group, in part because of the work that's been done by the Alternative Energy Committee, and because we already have some of the systems information locally, it was more useful to us to just get a understanding of the total needs of our facilities, sort of from stem to stern, across the, across the district.
Okay. Anything else from anyone else, David?
I had a quick question. I'm slightly confused, and it may be my own, it's not for you, Greg, so you can.
Excellent.
Although you constantly confuse me, but not this time.
Thank you, David.
We're going to have a meeting to discuss, I guess I'm confused between the One Town Concept, which I fully support, yet I have a duty to maintain the schools, and the interrelationship between the library, the town's needs, and the schools' needs. I would love to work them all out together, if possible, but at some point, we have to do what we have to do, what we're elected to do. But, so with this meeting that we're going to, this workshop, and or this committee, how, how are we going to coordinate our independent duty to the schools with also a desire to have all aspects of the town work together?
My thought about the workshop is that it's an opportunity for the full board to understand the detail contained in the facilities' study, so that you, as a full board, have a sense of the big picture. And that it will then be the job of the committee, which, right now, I think the view is, and Michael was there for that meeting, with the town council, as was Mary, but I think the view is that that would be a joint committee, smaller group, so a couple of board members, a couple of town councilors, Greg, you know, whomever else, Michael McGovern and I, would sit together to look at the full scope, so to look at the town needs and the school needs, and talk about how do we prioritize the spending for these, how do we budget for these, which projects could be chucked together, so that we have a 10-year sort of consistent expenditure plan, or there may be some fluctuation, but so that we are able to hit all of those needs across the 10 years. Does that help you?
Yes, it does. And I just, I think that's going to be an extremely difficult task for us to all try to interrelate our capital needs with our own independent duties to our own constituencies. It's a, I mean, I'm sure we'll be able to find a lot of overlap, I hope we don't, and a lot of consensus, but at some point, that's a very difficult job for that committee, it just.
And part of it, how long does that report, 200, I forgot?
It's at 360 pages right now.
So, the thought was to, you know, hand that size report to every school board member, and town council, it would be challenging. So, it's really to say, holistically, here's what the needs are, so in four years, when there's, you know, new school board members, there's a reference, here's, you know, comprehensively for the town of Cape Elizabeth, here's what the needs were. Obviously, you know, the town council and the school board will ultimately decide, you know, through annual budgets, the fund, but you have assets that have long-term lives, and we do annual budgets, so what's happened is some of, there's been a disconnect. So, the, the committee isn't going to say, in, you know, 2018, you're going to spend X dollars, but, you know, based on this report, you know, the average life of the assets, here's some guidelines. So, it would be kind of a reference document, and town, and voters could look at, it's a comprehensive view of all the needs of Cape Elizabeth. So, you know, if the school at some point says, you know, we need to do a bond offering, they can look and see, well, here's all the priorities for the town, so I can make a decision on, is this, is this a priority?
I think, David, it's not that different from any of the other committee work that we do, in that, you know, we, we appoint a couple of members of the board to a committee, they go and do, and, you know, dig, dig deep into the details of the work of that committee, and then, and then ultimately come back to the full board with their recommendation to the board, and the board has the opportunity to ask questions, and so on and so forth, and, and then eventually choose to support, or not to support, the work of the committee.
I think that's a good explanation, John. So, basically, the committee has to try to work up a common plan, to extend to Kimby One, but ultimately, the decision authority lies to town council for its, and us for ours. That seems a very reasonable approach.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone else? Thank you, Greg.
You're welcome.
We'll look forward to seeing you later this month and hearing more. And how, how soon will you get that report to us? It's 368 pages.
360 pages. Hopefully, by the end of this week, it will be substantially concluded. It may be a little less than that, if we're still ahead of the, things like that, but it's a first substantial.
Okay.
Edit away.
Yes, please. Feel free. Yeah, I have a red pen right here. Great. Okay, so, if there are no other comments or questions, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. I'm happy to announce that all of our schools, although you just heard from Connor Thorack, that we are in the midst of kneecap testing, the middle school is just wrapping up, and Pond Cove will be wrapping up soon, we finally received our adequate yearly progress information, and all three of our schools made AYP. So, in other words, they met the federal and state requirements for adequate yearly progress. So, that was good news that came last week. I also brought some information to share with you about class sizes. I know that was a request that had come in, and I had previously shared with you that at Pond Cove, we were over by one student in our, four of our six first-grade classrooms, and that remains true today. We are also over by one student in two of our six fourth-grade classrooms. So, again, Kelly's here, but I, I think we feel like we're managing just fine within those pieces, and, you know, those guidelines were established to give the board some general boundaries, but not, they're not absolutes. But certainly, if we felt there were specific concerns, we would bring those to your attention. At the middle school, we have 33 classes that exceed the class size guidelines, and at the middle school, the cap is 22 students per class, according to our guidelines, and we have eight classes of 25 students, and the others are either 23 or 24. But of those 33 classes, 21 of them are in allied arts, so health, P E, art, computer, so those sort of courses that sometimes have a couple of additional students, just because of the way the schedule works out. We have five science classes in eighth grade that have 24 or 25 students in them. We have a couple of math classes, one in seventh grade, two in eighth grade, and one or two in sixth grade, I'm looking now, I can't read my own writing, don't tell. One, one in sixth grade of 23. So, again, a very small number of the core academic classes that exceed. We also had two world language classes at the middle school of 23. So, I think fairly evenly distributed and close to the range. At the high school, we look both at the number of classes that exceed the guidelines, but also, because of the nature of high school, we also try to take a look at sections where we have fewer than 10 students. And we have, of 238 total classes, so, let's, think about the scheduling of the high school for a moment, of 238 total sections, we have 25 that have more than 22 students, and most of those are honors or CP classes. So, it's somewhat intentional in that respect, and only three of those classes are really ninth grade, or majority ninth grade classes, which are physics classes. So, and again, feel like we're in pretty good shape. Certainly, we'll be monitoring those numbers, and physics is one that is right on the edge, I think, this year, and, and kind of down to the wire. On the other end of the 238 sections, we have 34 right now that have fewer than 10 students, and of those 25 are instructional support classes. So, again, you're looking at a very small number, nine classes that, that are fewer than 10, and three of those nine are remedial. One is, is an enrichment course, a music theory course that's been offered. One was really just a scheduling issue, and the other four are classes that we kind of watch for patterns over time. So, they, but they traditionally run right on the edge. One of those that we looked at last year was choral music, to refresh your memory, and drama. So, that's the class size information.
Thank you, Meredith.
I will share with you that we have a teacher at the middle school who is soon to be out on maternity leave, and that's Tabitha Eastman. So, a substitute has been secured for her, a long-term sub, she'll be, she's requested about nine weeks, so within the allowable Family Medical Leave Act period. And the other piece I wanted to share with you, it's just a reminder, and I think every household in town should have received one of these today, but I'm sending some more along.
I have one.
Oh, you can have more, please, take some, share them with your friends, here you go. Pass them out. I have more, yes, I'm distributing them. But on October 16th, and I'll hold this up, from 6:30 to 8:00 in the high school cafeteria, we'll be holding a forum to develop, or begin the development of our strategic plan. So, it'll be really exciting, I'm hoping for a good turnout. I did make a pitch to the seniors who were in attendance at a candidate forum last week, and I'm, I'm sending some invites out to other students as well. I'm hoping for a good faculty turnout, and a great community turnout, so please help spread the word. 6:30 to 8:00, and we will have some light refreshments available for people who don't have time to grab dinner before they come out. And then, finally, I share this information with the board, and I believe middle school families heard this news last Friday, but our middle school principal, Steve Connolly, has submitted a letter of resignation. Steve has been offered the position of Superintendent of Schools in North Berwick, Berwick and Lebanon, Maine, and he will begin his work there in early January, possibly a little sooner. I think the current superintendent there, who's in interim, is anxious to get to Florida before the snow flies. So, right now, the plan is that Mr. Connolly will leave, will not return after Thanksgiving. So, I was able to meet with the middle school faculty today, just to talk about a search process, and I appreciate those folks who stuck around today to chat with me. Right now, what we're envisioning is really a two-phase process. So, initially, we would look for an interim middle school principal who would serve in that capacity through the end of the school year, ideally to begin right around Thanksgiving, but we'll, we'll see how that works out. I did tell the middle school faculty that if we couldn't find someone right away, that I would be glad to spend my time in their building until we're able to have someone on board. So, I'm not sure that that was good news for those who were there, but they smiled.
And nodded.
Indulgently, yes, okay. So, that would be the first phase, which I, and I would envision, again, that that would be a small group of faculty probably working with me to review applications for the interim position, and selecting an interim candidate, or an interim hire. And then, the long-term process would be to find the permanent replacement, so to begin work July 1. And typically, you want to get out kind of early in the ballgame when you're looking for strong candidates, and we were very fortunate last year in our search process, but we would hope to get an advertisement out in mid to late January, and begin a search process similar to the process we went through for the Pond Cove principal this past year, so including school faculty members, community members, school board members, and I would facilitate that, another administrator from within the district, and hopefully, we'd have someone hired by March, and ready to work for us in July. I will tell you that the middle school faculty is looking for an interim candidate in, in general, that, that will avoid icebergs, which I thought was a metaphor that was important to share with you today. But, but, you know, the ideal candidate would be someone who has some experience working with students at the middle level, who has experience as a school administrator, and who's going to be able to help maintain the good work that's been going on at the school, and support faculty, students, and families, and be able to sort of collect and share information with the permanent principal once he or she is hired. That's about the end of my report. I, I did also have the opportunity to attend the Cape Fusion event with Mr. Shed, and I'm, I'm looking forward to the next one. It's great to, you know, for me to be able to spend some time, although I didn't personally try the swimming pool obstacle course. I, I did have the opportunity to see several students onboard there, and it was a nice turnout, and a really fun event. So.
Thank you for, yeah.
Not that great. So, I'm hoping they'll have some other events next time around.
Yes. So, that reminds me to thank you, Meredith, for all of the events that you attend. You're around a lot, you're very visible, and thank all the other chaperones as well who attended. We need those chaperones to host these, these wonderful events. So, I hope there'll be another Cape Fusion soon. It sounded like it was a hit with every grade, which is a hard thing, to, to have things appeal to young kids, and, or, you know, to the ninth graders and to the seniors.
Speaking, I, I was just reminded by, of one other item that is coming up, which is the Pond Cove Parent Association Scarecrow Event.
I love that.
So, I'm so glad to hear you say that, Mary, because next Monday, next Monday afternoon, anyone looking for some scarecrow fun is welcome to join me here at the town hall to put together a scarecrow. So, just put that invitation out there, for those of you looking for some afternoon fun.
And when is that again?
That will be Monday, Monday afternoon.
There's a deadline to enter, correct?
That's it. It's Monday, I believe, in deadlines.
Okay.
Okay. Meredith, Cape Fusion is, there was a grant that was proposed by?
By, well, it was proposed by Erin Filio, but was supported by CF. By, well, it was proposed by Erin Filio, but was supported by CEF. And so again, there were some CEF representatives there, but great support from them in, in really getting this initiative off the ground.
And is it, was it a one-time, or I think it goes every once a month, is what I?
We'll see, but it is intended to be a series of events, and hopefully will gain some momentum and be sustained throughout the year.
That's great. Wonderful. Maybe I'll chaperone next time.
Or make the brown. I got the same book, and I volunteer to chaperone.
Okay, thank you so much. We will move on to item number six, new business. Item A, consideration to approve the proposed World Affairs Council Model UN trip to the University of Connecticut, November eighth through tenth, 2012. Do I have a motion, please?
Yes, I move that we approve the proposed World Affairs Council Model UN trip to the University of Connecticut, November eighth through the tenth, 2012.
Do I have a second? Do I have any questions, comments, concerns?
Why a concern? There are two adults going with nineteen children, or nineteen students? That to me sounded...
I think that's general.
Is that general?
Jeff, that's generally what.
Yeah, I think the school board guidelines were twelve.
For high school.
Wow. Okay. And this teacher has done it, I can't remember her name.
Miss Hall.
Thank you.
Yeah, she's been helping with the question. She's been helping with the question.
Yeah, two years.
I've been, I've been to a couple of model UNs with her, and she's really responsible.
Okay, so not, she can handle nineteen?
Definitely.
They can handle nineteen? Well, of course, because they're...
Who's going with?
Her husband.
Okay.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Seven oh. Item B, consideration to approve the following staff nominations for the 2012-2013 school year. In the middle school, we have just one, Paul Casey, for a .5 FTE, Language Arts and Social Studies teacher. Do I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve Paul Casey as a .5 FTE, Language Arts and Social Studies teacher for the 2012-2013 school year.
Do I have a second? Okay, Elizabeth. Okay, any questions, concerns? All those in favor? Seven oh. All right. Item C, I think we can consider as a slate. Item C is consideration to approve the following co-curricular staff nominations, and these are online for anyone watching. Do I have a motion, please?
Yes, I move that we approve the co-curricular staff nominations for the high school as listed under item C in the agenda packet.
Okay, Michael. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions, concerns? David?
Just a comment for the audience. We seem to raise these nominations and quickly vote on them, but I want people to realize that we receive a substantial amount of material in all these people, and we have an executive session where we discuss it at length with Meredith. So it may seem like we're just robotically approving these, but it is in no way robotic. We have done a great amount of due diligence, as has Meredith and the various committees and so forth. So I just wanted that noted for the record, although I do support this.
Okay. All right. All those in favor? Okay, item D, consideration of the following policies for first reading. John, do you want to tell us a little bit about those? There's no vote for these, but...
Right, so there's no need for a motion here, but as, as a school board meeting fans are well aware, the policy committee is, is making its way through a review of the substantial set of district policies which govern our schools, with the help of Ann Chapman from Drummond Woodson, who is assisting us to review first, first of all, the, the, those policies that are required by law. And so we have been making changes to those policies, guided by Meredith and the district leadership team, and bringing those changes to the board. And this item D is a slate of policies that are before the board for first read, which means that the board has an opportunity to look at them and ask questions about the changes that are proposed, and, and, and we'll actually vote on them at our November board meeting.
I just want to add to that, that many of the changes that have been made are suggested by Drummond Woodson, mostly reflect changes that have occurred in main state law. So we're, the majority of changes I would classify as just bringing our policy up to modern legal standards.
That's a great point, thank you. We're, we're, yes, that's true. We're not, we're not generally setting out to redefine how the, the district does business, but it's better to say that we're bringing our policies into compliance with the law, or make them consistent with the law. Thank you.
Any other questions about the policies? Okay, so you'll see these again next month in your packet, and we'll vote on them next month.
And we will forewarn you that you're likely to see an additional packet. You'll see this same packet back for second read, I just moved it here. So you'll see this same packet back for a second reading, but you'll also likely see another packet for first reading of some additional policies. So we will do our best to get those to you as early as possible after the policy committee meeting, but my thanks to Andrea especially, because there's a lot of proofreading and editing, and labor-intensive work involved in just turning some of these around. So we'll, we'll do our best to get them out in a timely manner.
Thank you, Andrea.
We want them to come out correctly, too.
Thank you. We'll move on now to item E, consideration to approve the following job descriptions. And there is a slate in your packet under item E. Looks to be about twenty job descriptions. We went over these in workshop in September. So do I have a motion to approve the job descriptions as listed?
Yes, I move that we approve the following job descriptions listed under item six E in the packet, and just to give the public a flavor, it's principal of elementary, athletic administrator, community services adult programs coordinator, head custodian are four or five of the ten to fifteen job descriptions listed in the packet.
Thank you, Michael. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Elizabeth. Any questions? David?
Yes, I, I spoke to Meredith about this briefly. I thought they were all fine, except they did not have a clause that I think is very important to have in all of them. And the question is always, does it go in here? Does it go in the contracts? Does it go in the union contracts? The answer is probably all three. I mentioned it to Meredith, and I, and Meredith can speak, but I think it's very important to have as a required, job requirement in the job description, as well as the other ones, that the person must be at all times in compliance with all school board and district policies and procedures, as well as all federal and state laws, rules, and regulations. We all assume that's true, but it rarely is stated, apparently, in these sorts of things, and it should be. And I mentioned it to Meredith, and Meredith had a very good answer for me, if she can remember it.
It might have been good at the time, I'll do my best. So David had raised this point at our workshop session, and I inquired both of our, some area superintendents, as well as of Ann Chapman, our labor consultant at Drummond Woodson, and the consensus was that really no one has this, per se, in job descriptions at the moment, but that doesn't make it a bad idea. And so I appreciate David's point. We have this batch of job descriptions in front of us. I, I do think it, it makes something that we all take for granted very explicit, and that's not a bad thing when you're dealing with policy. Certainly, it is the practice of our building administrators to review particular policies as required by law with staff. We certainly have updated staff. Last year's policy change, for example, on staff conduct with students, was one that, that we wanted to spend some time with staff, or discussing with staff. We update all new, all new employees on district policy and procedures, but I think it's worth putting in the job descriptions, and I would support David's addition.
Okay, so do we need to make an amended motion, then?
I would be glad to restate an amended motion, and see if I can do it. I move that we consider, I move that we approve the job descriptions attached to our agenda as item six E, subject to the addition of language to the effect, as drafted, may be drafted by Meredith in legal counsel, to the effect that, that there'll be an additional requirement of compliance with all school board and district rules and regulations and policies, as well as state and federal law rules and regulations.
You know, I appreciate you making that, but I'm, I'm sitting here looking and thinking, there's a motion on the table now that we should probably have withdrawn prior to...
Actually, under Rogers' rules, I'm...
Okay, go ahead.
She's, she's Roberts' rule, sorry.
If it's a friendly amendment, the original proponent of the motion may accept it as a friendly amendment.
Okay, are you guys gonna?
Are you gonna be friendly, John? Sure. Michael?
I will, Bill. I, I accept David's amended, or, yeah, it's, what do you say?
Friendly amendment.
I, I accept the amendment.
Does Elizabeth have to accept that as well?
Elizabeth, why are you comfortable?
How are you feeling, Elizabeth?
I'll accept the amendment.
All right, thank you, everyone. Any questions?
I just have, I have one small concern about that, that approach, at the risk of belaboring this point, which is just that this is a policy that, this is a, a clause that governs all, all district employees. And whenever we have something like that, a clause which governs all district employees, I'd rather put it in a policy which governs all district employees than to repeat it over and over again in, inside of individual job descriptions, which to my mind ought to contain ideally just what's unique to that job. And because, and the reason I say that is, is it just becomes very, it becomes cumbersome to keep all of our job descriptions, for example, consistent with each other with these kinds of things. I know that historically, the, the members of the previous board policy committees, or sorry, HR committees, spend extraordinary amounts of time bringing some consistency to our job descriptions, and we would sort of begin that process all over again. And, and so to my mind, ideally, anything that was universal would be dealt with in a place where it could be, you know, that you could have a single statement universally applied, and, but I don't think that's, you know, I'd, I'd like to move these forward rather than maybe belaboring it too much, but that, that's my concern about it.
Do you want me to address the concern, or should we just vote? Because I have a simple answer, or we can just vote.
No, I mean, this is a public meeting.
The simple answer is that you can't do what you say. The problem is, you have a, a conflict between contract law and school board policy. If it's not in a contract, which job descriptions are usually incorporated into a contract, or it's not in the union contract, the fact we have a policy leaves, the person may not be contractually bound to that policy unless you specifically state that somewhere. You don't want to have a problem with an employee who says, "I've never read the policy," or whatever. When it's in their job description, they've read it. When it's in their contract, they've read it. This is the standard way to do it. It's a simple, although I am...
Then I would put it in the contract, because that, that deals with, you know, there's only four or five of those.
Well, actually, there's not. For every teacher, they have their own individual contract for, there is quite a few number of contracts. We have a few union contracts. And I, I can assure you that it won't be effective, I shouldn't say it won't be effective. Actually, there is always a question of effectiveness unless you give notice, and the best way to do it is in a job description and in, and in the contract. I don't know if it's in the contracts, but this is a very simple way we might as well start it. Now, it's no different than the standard, quite frankly, the standard one-sentence common language we have in all these various job descriptions, like the little bit at the bottom that says, "This doesn't state everything, anything else might apply." You can come up with a standard one-sentence, and we put in all of it. I think it's a fairly simple thing to do, and I urge it. Period.
Okay, I'm comfortable moving to vote.
Okay. All right, everyone else, any other questions?
I do have one question.
Okay.
And I'm just assuming, or I just want to make the, the obvious statement, that since we will be replacing our middle school principal, that, that will be a part of the next batch of job descriptions that we work on. Yes?
That is correct. Under our hiring procedures that we talked about at the October workshop, we would be looking at that when we move to fill the permanent positions, so sometime in that December-January timeframe.
Correct.
Okay, great. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Six one. All right, so we will move on now to committee reports. Are there any committees that wish to report?
Real quickly, the insurance task force, we've completed the draft, and it's been reviewed by council of an RFP for an expert to be hired. I don't know if I stated at the last meeting that there has been a decision by the First Circuit that allows us now to get the information. Hopefully, that document will be sent, will be finalized for the task force within a few days if somebody gets around to finalizing it, that's me. But it's been approved by council, and we're ready to move forward.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that work. It's been onerous. Okay, any questions about the health insurance review task force? No? Okay. All right, so we will move on to school board agenda requests. Are there any requests for the agenda next month? Okay. Announcements of upcoming meetings. Meredith, you've already talked about the community meeting next Tuesday, a week from tonight. Tuesday, Tuesday.
Six-thirty, high school cafeteria. Great.
Meredith, on that, for, for people that can't attend, if they, could you spend just a minute on, obviously, we want everyone's feedback, but maybe it would help, if, if people do want to provide feedback, if we could direct them to kind of the form we're looking, not the form, but, you know, if they want to provide feedback, you know, what, what would be helpful to, to move us forward in this endeavor?
I certainly would welcome any ideas, thoughts, or concerns that people have regarding the future of the school district. There is an email address, and it's also right on here, communityforum@capeelizabethschools.org. So if you're unable to attend, you can certainly send any ideas, thoughts, or suggestions to that address. We also, once all the information is collected at the forum, there will be a committee, and I've already had some responses from community members who are interested in being part of that work. But there will be a working committee, and I believe I outlined this at a prior meeting, similar to the process we use for Mission and Vision, where we have some faculty members from the schools, board members, community members. There are some in the audience who are part of that work previously, but where that group would come together to work through all of the ideas that are generated during the forum and pull that together into a plan. So that plan would be sent out as a draft as well, so that would be another opportunity for people to provide feedback. But I, again, I would welcome sort of any email. People can certainly call us as well, but the email address, communityforum@capeelizabethschools.org is probably the best way to get information to us.
But it could range from, you know, I want to see X taught in eleventh grade. Okay, so the full range of ideas are...
Full range of ideas. You know, we'd like to have...
Switch to number three pencils.
An additional swing set, you know, and, yeah, we, number three pencils, I suppose. I would, I would be happy to entertain that idea, too, but, yeah, the full gamut. I mean, we're looking at programs, facilities, instructional needs, the, the big picture of what do we think we need in our schools in the next, you know, three to five years.
So I have a question. For those folks who are planning to attend next Tuesday night, October sixteenth, from six-thirty to eight p.m. at the high school cafeteria.
Snacks.
What, for those who are considering going, what can they expect when they...
Wow.
What type of agenda will you have for the evening?
So there'll be an introduction, probably about fifteen minutes, and then we'll be breaking people into groups roughly about twenty... people into groups, roughly about 20 people in a group, who'll be working with members of the district administrative team to work through a protocol, where you'll be asked to sort of project yourself into the future and talk about what things you see happening in our school system. And there'll be some opportunity to kind of work backwards to outline, how did we get here? How did we reach these lofty goals that we identified earlier?
That's exciting. I'll see you next Tuesday night.
Tuesday, hey, Tuesday, October 16th.
Six thirty.
Six thirty to eight.
It's been a long day. I don't mean to be punchy, but I really would love to, the best news would be to have a wonderful turnout, and so that would be exciting.
We should have several groups of 20.
We'll be there.
Meredith, who did we send? Did we send this out to all school people, community service?
Everyone in town. All the town residents that we know of. Yes. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Okay, we have our, our workshop, October 25th, is that correct? I don't have a calendar in front of me. I'm sorry, October 23rd.
23rd. Sorry, I don't have one in front of me either, but October 23rd.
Okay, October 23rd, we will have our workshop, and it looks like we're going to be discussing the, the facilities needs plan, so we'll see everyone there. So, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Seven.
Okay, thank you.